You're good.
It's on?
Yes.
Okay. We're pleased that you're here. We're pleased to be meeting in Memphis. I think you remember that last year, the legislature gave us permission to meet outside of Nashville, and we're enjoying that opportunity. It's great to be here. It's also need to recognize the host that's provided the meeting facilities and done a lot of the planning here. Bill, Dr. Trout, we certainly appreciate the hospitality provided by Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to host you. We had a wonderful time yesterday, and I think the legislature had wisdom to move our meetings around the great state of Tennessee is proving to be right on target, but we're so glad to have you. And if there's anything during the course of the morning we can do to be helpful, let us know.
Great, great. We certainly appreciate the reception that you had for the board last night at your house. You're in Cato. Put on a real show for us. Very excellent reception. We appreciate it. Appreciate all the work that went into our day yesterday. We started out by visiting two schools in this area. Excellent visits, see what's going on in some of the schools in Memphis. We then had a panel discussion of educators with educators. Just excellent dialogue about what they see as the need for K-12 education in this area, and I think real good dialogue with the board and with these educators. And then we moved into a workshop yesterday afternoon. It was about four hours. And we spent a lot of time reviewing some of the agenda items that we'll be looking at today, but also some other items that are particularly important to us. We spent a good bit of time talking about the individualized education program. We spent a good bit of time talking about where we are with Tennessee Ready, very important assessment program that we're implementing this year. And then we had a really good report on some of the work that's going on with math and English language standards that we're working on and some changes that we're making there. Just an excellent report. They'll be coming back to this group for our January meeting for approval at that time. And then we spent a lot of time looking at the charter appeals that we'll be dealing with in today's meeting. So, an excellent discussion there, and then some additional time talking about some of the other items that we have on our agenda. So, it was certainly a full day yesterday. Now, you will recognize that as we go through the agenda today, that we'll move through this agenda pretty quickly. And that's because a lot of these items, we spent some time talking, a good bit of time talking about yesterday, and also because all the board members have had this notebook full of material for the last week or so that we've had an opportunity to study, ask questions about, and have discussion with staff about. So, we will move through them quickly, but don't let that suggest that we haven't dug into each of these items very diligently. Okay, we will move to our agenda that we've had for the meeting. We do have all of our board members present, so that obviously is a quorum that we have here. So, we're pleased that all the board members could be in attendance at this meeting. The first item we have on the agenda is the consent items that will be adoption of the agenda that we have issued. There is one change in that agenda. We're going to be removing item 6B from that agenda. Other than that, it'd be the agenda that we have posted and have been handed out. We also have approval of our last board minutes, the minutes for September the 24th, and we will have on the consent agenda delegation of authority to review initial order of the administrative law judge. So, those are the three items we've got on our consent agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, consent agenda is approved. Okay, we'll move to our action items on first reading. The first item is the individualized education account rules. So, Rebecca, go present that. There she is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item is to present the rules for the individualized education account program. The law was signed into, the act was signed into law in May of 2015 and requires that the board approve rules for the program. This is the first read of the proposed rules. They will be brought back for final approval in January. The rules were developed by both the State Board of Education Staff and the Tennessee Department of Education Staff, and were informed by feedback from stakeholder groups across the state. There will be a public rulemaking hearing on November the 12th on the proposed rules, and then the department will be drafting procedures for the program after the proposed rules are finalized. There will be more information provided at the next meeting about the rules. And this item is to present the rules on first read. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Rebecca?
I just want to say, for those of you who were here yesterday, I asked all of my questions yesterday, and there were many.
Fifteen of them.
Maybe more, but I just wanted to thank you for your responses. You clearly have a grasp of this issue and this new law, and we are thankful to have you there working through this. So, I'll continue to ask questions, but I'm confident you'll continue to have the answers, so thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Rebecca, thank you. Good job, and appreciate the presentation yesterday. As Wendy indicated, we did spend a considerable amount of time on this item in the workshop yesterday. Let's move to item B, service learning course standards. Danielle? There she is.
Thank you, sir, board. This item, service learning, represents a revision to the standards for this course. The revised standards are designed to cover the knowledge and skills required by the board's work-based learning framework, which was established in the high school policy 2.103. The new standards really reflect the continued changes that we've made to make sure that all the courses are rigorous and up to where we wish to have our students. The other pieces or components of this course, really, this course focuses on students who are addressing community issues through personalized exploration and service hours. So, this is a little bit of a different course, but it's really intended for students who have a burning kind of innate desire to see life differently. They do a lot of individualized learning experiences, and then through that, the teacher kind of facilitates that learning process for that student. We have a number of districts who actually do use this course. So, I will stop there and ask if there are any questions for this.
Okay, questions? Questions? Discussion? You know, I think this is an excellent improvement in what we're doing. I think the opportunity to have work-based learning is extremely important, and it's something that I think too many times in the past, we've not had adequate focus on because there's a lot of students out there who this is a real vehicle to get them engaged and involved in the learning process. So, I think this is excellent. You've got some great goals in there. I think they're very aggressive goals, but I think they're great goals.
And one piece, and not to steal the thunder of public communications that we'll do in the next week or two, is that the hours that students use for this course, as well as work-based learning hours, can count towards the Tennessee Promise hours that are required. So, it's a win-win all the way around. So, we'll make that publicly known outside of what I just did publicly in the next week or two.
Great, great. Is there a motion to approve on first reading? Got a motion, second? Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Danielle, thank you. You've got the next item.
I do.
Jobs for Tennessee graduates.
Right. So, this item presents the Jobs for Tennessee Graduates, or otherwise known as JTG, as a general elective course, which will be offered or is available for individuals who are in the 12th grade year. These standards were developed by Jobs for America's Graduates Organization, which is a third-party vendor. We worked with that organization to adjust the standard such to what you see today. As with other third-party vendor courses such as Project Lead the Way, the department allows for individual districts to work directly with the organization around trainings, things along those lines. That is not something that the department does handle, but the districts work directly with those organizations. So, I will stop there for questions.
Okay, questions? Carolyn?
I had had some questions about the funding, which I think you've answered. The contracts are actually by district. It's not a state provided.
Right, right. Because it's a third-party vendor course, the relationship is always between the district that wishes to offer the course and the organization that provides the training.
And am I correct that this would just be a supplement to providing career exploration to the courses? We already have extensive courses in that, in our CTI programs.
Correct. So, this course is a general elective course. It is not tied to any CTE program of study and will not count towards the concentrator status for CTE. It is just a general elective course.
Thank you.
Is, yeah, Mike?
I do think this is a great opportunity for third parties to fund. Business community be creating up there.
Yeah, and I think that's very important as well, is that, you know, as a state, for the department, you know, we're always open to working with third-party vendors on opportunities that can meet the whole needs of our student population.
But also just funding the LEA with the cost.
Correct.
To what extent is this, are these courses available now? Future or?
So, this particular course will go into effect following final reading approval for the upcoming school year, so not this current school year. So, it'll be 16, 17. The way in which our programs of study work within the department itself is that, and just for refresher, our programs of study that the department promotes starts very much with a student at that freshman year, and the student follows sequentially courses that build on their skills development mastery, you might say. Our senior-level courses within our programs of study actually are intended to show that mastery, whether it's through a practicum course, a work-based learning course, an early post-secondary course that allows for that student to, again, exhibit the mastery dependent on the subject that he or she is actually studying.
Okay. The reason I was asking, I've got a whole bunch of grandchildren that probably need or something like this. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, is there a motion that we approve on first reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, second? Got a second? Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Danielle, you're on a roll here. We'll let you do the next one.
I am. This is my last time up. So, this item actually is just to update the approved high school courses based on these two that we just had discussions on, the service learning and the jobs for Tennessee graduates. So, this will just update the list of high school courses that we promote at the department.
Okay, questions? Is there a motion that we approve on first reading? Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Danielle, thank you. Great job. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll now move to item E, school nutrition. It seems to be coming back on somewhat of a recurring basis, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we're bringing school nutrition rules. This rule makes adjustments to the rules adopted by the board in 2014. The rules adopted in 2014 set a 30-day exemption from school nutrition standards for infrequent school-sponsored fundraisers. When that rule went to the Government Operations Committee, some of the committee members expressed concern with the 30-day exemption. They felt that districts needed more flexibility in those days. So, we have made adjustments to offer 20 exemption days per semester with the option to request additional days if needed.
Okay. Questions? Comments? And I'm assuming that all this is permissible within the federal guidelines that we're working with, right?
Yes.
We can make this exception, okay? Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve on first reading? Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Okay, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, thank you. Elizabeth? Okay, Paul, teacher and principal evaluation policy.
Great, well, thank you and good morning. This item relates to a greater clarification and explanation of three, of the process of three existing areas in the teacher and principal evaluation policy. The first relates to the alternate evaluation models. As you know, we have the opportunity for districts to provide and apply for alternate evaluation models. Currently have four on the teacher's side and two on the leader's side, and this has been in effect since the beginning, but we've never outlined, and we haven't outlined the process and the steps. So, that's what this is clarifying and explaining around that first area of alternate evaluation models. The second piece of this is around the student growth measure as well. This also has been in the policy. It's to clarify the language from the language of saying "may elect" to actually "will", and this is if the growth score is higher than the 15% measure, then it can be used if that score is a three, four, or five for individual teachers or principals. So, again, that's been in the policy, but it's to clarify the language. And the third item related to that is student surveys. As you know, in July, we talked, and you adopted two other additional vendors on student surveys, so we now have three. And this is, again, like alternate models to actually outline the process so that it's clear how to go about both for vendors that would like to become an additional vendor and also for districts to tap in. Happy to report from July, we actually have 25 districts that are using student surveys, which numerically, we have over, about 23, 24% of all students then in the state are in a district that has that opportunity for student surveys at this time. So, at this point, that is the recommendation on the clarification on the policy.
Okay. Questions? Any questions? I think this is certainly good to hear that we've got that kind of involvement with the student evaluation. Something that I guess I've been promoting, this board has been promoting. I think we need to do more of it. I think that's a very valuable information source that sometimes hasn't been used as frequently as it needs to be. Very valuable information. Any questions for Paul? Okay, is there a motion that we approve on first reading? Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Paul, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The State Board of Education Master Plan. Sarah?
Thank you, Chairman. We had a great discussion yesterday, I think, on the updated master plan that you have before you for first reading today. This master plan builds on the work establishing key policy levers within each of the priority areas, which you'll be voting on, as well as the vision statement that we've been working on since earlier this year, later in this meeting, and gives some additional areas of focus. It also articulates student achievement targets for the next five years and across a host of important measures. As we discussed yesterday, there's more work to be done between first and final reading, and I'll look forward to a lengthier conversation and work session with the board in January before final reading. But the attempt here is to provide student achievement targets that we can, as a state, track towards over the next five years, as well as some key policy levers and areas of focus for the board that we can reset on an annual basis in our efforts to achieve those student achievement goals. I'll stop there and take any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions, comments?
Chairman, I have a question. I just want to express my appreciation for the work that's gone in to getting us to this point, and I hope we'll refine it some more. Sarah, thank you for the hard work on this.
Thank you, Lonnie. We appreciate it, and we'll look forward to more conversations.
Mr. Chairman, I think Sarah and Sarah have done an excellent job, and I think this gives us an excellent roadmap.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments? And I think, as Sarah mentioned, I think it is important that we'll spend significant block of time working on this, and hopefully we'll go get that scheduled in conjunction with our January meeting. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second, okay? Any questions, other comments? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Sarah, thank you. Okay, special courses for permanent status. Who's, okay, Tammy?
Thank you. Today you have before you elective special courses that are up for permanent status. Elective special courses are created by local school districts to meet the unique needs of their students and their communities. The department approves these courses in years one through three. After three years, a course may become permanent as a part of that local school district upon approval of the state board. You have the complete list of courses that are in year three. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, if not, is there a motion that we approve? Is there, is there a motion? How about a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Tammy, thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the action items on final reading. The first is the item A, Charter School Performance Framework. And Tess, there she is.
Good morning. So, today I present to the board on final reading updates to the State Board of Education's Charter School Performance Framework. As a reminder, the performance framework is a national authorizing best practice, and the key document that the board... the key document that the Board will use to hold any authorized charter schools accountable in terms of academic, financial, and operational performance. The framework will be incorporated into any contract between the State Ward and an authorized school, and then annually, charter schools and the public will receive a report on the performance of this framework. The Performance Framework was approved in October 2014, so the updates approved on first reading in September align the framework with the state's updated accountability system, as well as include a few additional measures. There have been no changes since first reading, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions for Tess? Any question, Wendy?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, we spent a lot of time on this at the last meeting, I think at the meeting before, and again, as I said earlier with the IEA, I want to say it to you and the folks who are working on this, thank you for the work you put into this. I feel like any school that comes under our umbrella, whenever that happens, would have a great framework to know exactly what they need to do to stay in good standing. This, and then the next item that you present, rather than speaking again, I'll just say I really appreciate the work that you've done on both.
Okay, other comments? I just, my notes here say I ought to echo what Wendy just said. I think this really is good work on both of these items, and I think that we've got an excellent framework to work with here, and it's just great work. Any questions? Okay, is there a motion that we approve on final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Tess, we'll let you talk about B.
Yes, so this is, I'm presenting to you on final reading updates to Policy 6.7, which is our Charter School Intervention Policy. This policy would, in addition to the Performance Framework, would be included in any contract signed between the State Board and an authorized school. Just want to note a couple of things for the Board. It's clearly stated in the policy that the Board has the discretion to place a charter school on any level at any time, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a step-by-step process if more immediate action is necessary. The changes that were approved in September provide additional details to an authorized charter school about the general conditions that may trigger an intervention and what types of actions and consequences that may ensue. The policy now includes a table of interventions and those possible responses to those issues, and these changes are based on practices currently in place with authorizers and have been tailored to the specific context of the State Board, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions for Tess? Any questions? Okay, is there a motion that we approve on final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Tess, thank you. Okay, Sarah, State Board Vision Statement and Strategic Priorities.
Yes, thank you, and this is related to our previous discussion on the master plan first reading. This item comes to you on final reading and concludes our discussion and our work to really set forth a clear vision and the five strategic priority areas that we've been discussing since last spring. The master plan, as we just mentioned earlier, will continue to build out the framework of policies under those five areas that we've identified as a board to be of strategic focus, but this just on final reading passes the vision statement and those five priority areas. So I'll take any questions if you have them.
Questions? Okay, is there a motion that we approve on final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Okay. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Sarah, appreciate it. Okay, we'll now move to the list of state-approved textbooks. This is for advanced manufacturing, human service, information technology, and education and training. Tammy?
Thank you. There have been changes to the list since first read, so I want to briefly, just to give you an update on what those changes are. The textbook process is a two-phase process, and the first phase of the process is really looking for what we call the non-negotiables, or the most important things that we want to see in the content of a textbook, and that's alignment to the standards, rigor, expectation of the standards, those sort of things. And so at the end of Phase One, we actually had 10 textbooks that did not pass that phase. So out of those 10 textbooks that did not pass Phase One, seven books were voluntarily pulled by their publishers. Three books, which incorporated three books and two publishing companies, chose to move forward in the process and revise their content and resubmit. Out of those three books that were resubmitted, one made changes and did pass and move on to Section Two and stayed on the list. Two did not pass after their resubmission. So there's a total of nine books that are not on the list that were included in the first list. So those are a short summary of the changes. So the list that you have includes 23 textbooks and eight publishing companies. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Okay, questions? Any questions?
Let me, I think it's really instructive to watch the process between the time books come to us for the first reading, the period between the first and the second, and what occurs during that. So people think that this is being handled flippantly or without a great deal of, one, analysis, and, two, reaction to feedback, they're just not really paying attention. So I think the process is great, and thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Has there been an update to the Board in the last couple of years? The status of moving from traditional textbook processes to more contemporary forms of support for instruction? Do we have a picture of kind of the state of Tennessee? If not, is it something we might get in the future, mean a little snapshot?
So the Department would be glad to bring a presentation to a work session to update you on that. We have had quite a few changes. So for example, last year, so this is actually the second year, all of the samples are online so that they can be viewed by any Tennesseean, so anyone can view. So we do have samples online. We also, this is the second year that we have had workbooks that are completely online. They're not available in hard copy, so we do have some that are 100% technology-based.
And I think, Bill, we have had some discussion, in fact, Mike frequently brings that question up about, are we making progress?
[laughter]
And I think it, I think we are making progress, but it's perhaps slower than we would think it ought to be, or we'd like for it to be, but I think we are making some progress. But I think it would be good to have another review of exactly where we are on it. And we do, as Mike said earlier, we do really depend on the State Textbook and Instructional Materials Commission to handle this for us, and as Mike said, I think they do a good job of working through this and making sure we've got the right textbooks.
That's right.
Yes.
Just from my own education, how often does the commission meet the State Textbook?
So they have three annual scheduled meetings, but sometimes we do have a special called meeting. Generally, it's four times a year, but three are scheduled.
Okay.
Could, would you, and could you give us a report on the barriers to going more digital, you know, on any material textbooks? And it's not something that would be required, but there's a lot of districts out there that could flip there very quickly, and just about everywhere these kids are going after high school, they're going to be in that environment, so, I mean, we are kind of, it's time to look at that.
Agreed. We would be glad to bring that information back to the Board.
Okay, other questions? Okay, is there a motion that we approve on final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, and appreciate it. Okay, Paul, LEA Alternative Salary Schedules, Hawkins County and Union County.
Right, and thank you, and as you know, the State Board guidance permits districts to meet the requirements of differentiated pay plans through the adoption of an alternative salary schedule. Three of those were approved in the July meeting a few months ago, and these two districts are proposing Hawkins and Union for their, proposing is along with their differentiated pay plan to streamline their advanced degree schedules for this. Interesting, just as, wanted to mention briefly from yesterday, Wendy asked a question on differentiated pay and the connection, I know with Praxis, but what's encouraging on differentiated pay is we actually have 76 districts, and Union is one of them, like, is one of the two today that are using hard-to-staff incentives as part of their differentiated pay, and they're using it for high school math, which I believe is encouraging to see so many districts are starting to see that as part of their differentiated pay option to actually think strategically about hard-to-staff areas like high school math, high school physics, those pieces. So that's where we are right now on that question from yesterday, Wendy, and also for these two districts.
Okay, questions concerning the alternate, alternative schedules that are being proposed here for review? Any questions?
There's a question. I'm assuming we're continuing to meet with districts to encourage this?
Yes, exactly. This is on an ongoing basis.
I'll, just a follow-up to that. What's your sense, in meeting with districts, that the primary barrier to doing that is?
Barrier to what?
To implementing a differential pay plan, whether they adopted one or not, but...
I think what we're hearing on, depending on the area that they're choosing, you know, for the differentiated pay, whether that's hard-to-staff, whether that's additional roles for additional pay, like teacher leadership, I think initially, a barrier to fear is funding, right, and some of the budget, but when they're actually starting down that road, they're seeing that some success, but that's the perceived barriers around the funding piece.
Yeah, other questions or comments? Now, I think this is an area that the State Board has really been promoting, encouraging. I think we are making progress in getting many local systems involved, and I guess my only concern is that I think that some of the work that has been done is a little bit timid. I think we can be more aggressive in getting more to reflecting performance and pay and so forth, so I just think we need to continue to promote this, encourage systems to look aggressively at how we can really best utilize the opportunity that's there. Any other comments or questions? Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve on final reading for Hawkins County and Union County?
So moved.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any questions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you, Paul, appreciate it. Okay, and of course, examination rule, Dr. Towns. Ah, didn't it look like Dr. Towns? Looks like Stephen Smith to me.
We've had a change in the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the end-of-course examinations rule, and this will bring the rule in line with Public Chapter 256, which was put into place by the General Assembly, and this is the new law that provides districts with flexibility relative to including TCAP scores in the final grades in the event that the schools don't receive the scores within five days before the end of the school year.
Okay, questions? Any questions, discussion? Is there a motion that we approve on final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Any, any discussion?
So this is not used to replace an end-of-course for a final grade, or is it?
The law previously required school districts to count the TCAP as 25% of the final course grade. You may recall, a couple of years ago, there was a delay in providing those scores to school districts, and it created some confusion, and so the legislature felt like there was a need to provide a little flexibility to school districts, and so they felt this was the appropriate place to be.
So Stephen, if they are provided within the five days situation, then it is included?
That's correct.
And I think our intent is to provide them five days before the end of the school so that they are included. This is just kind of a safeguard if we don't get that done.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I would point out that because this is the first year of the new T N Ready test, that those scores will be provided after that, after that time, so districts will be making decisions.
Yeah. Okay, other questions? Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve. We need a roll call vote, so Phil, if you could call a roll, please.
Ms. Chancey?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Dr. Traut?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye. Approved. Thank you. Stephen, you go to be Dr. Towns again, okay?
I like this doctor thing. This is the policy, and it just, it revises the policy in light of the change that you just made with the rule. Same subject matter.
Yeah. Okay, questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve on final reading?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second?
Got a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Stephen, thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Stephen. Okay, item H, Individualized Education Account Course Code, and Rebecca's back.
Yes, sir. Hello. The Individualized Education Account Act requires that students enrolled in the IEA program be counted in district's enrollment for the purposes of calculating funding. The Tennessee Department of Education has created a new course code for these students, and this item is being proposed at final reading before the Board.
Okay, questions? Any discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the Charter School Appeal Items, and Sarah?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Before you, as we discussed extensively yesterday, are five Charter School appeals, one from Jackson-Madison and four from Metro Nashville. As the Board discussed yesterday, we are in a position to take action on each of these appeals, and as you may recall from the discussion, each one has gone through a de novo review by our staff, a review committee, it's gone through a capacity interview as well as a public hearing, and that, those come together in our best efforts as a staff to bring to you a recommendation that articulates our assessment of the application, both on the merits, as well as looking at the portfolio review and performance record. It's a high bar in terms of the state's role by statute as an appellate body and authorizer, and for any recommendation to come to you for approval, the application must meet or exceed in all areas of review, which are academic, operations, financials, as well as portfolio review and performance record. So I'll go through each of the five appeals one at a time, and we'll need to take a roll call vote on each. But the first one before you is from Jackson-Madison and its Connections Preparatory Academy. The Board's staff recommendation is to affirm the denial of the district in this case, and I'll pause there and take any questions.
Okay, questions on item A? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think it bears worth repeating that we went through these in minutia detail yesterday and a tremendous amount of great information in this case.
And not only did we go through them in a great deal of detail yesterday, but the written material that we have in our notebooks is even more extensive, so it is really, really well-done, and hope those of you who may be interested will read through that material, because it's well-done material. Okay, on item A, is there a motion to approve the recommendations of staff?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Got a second? Any, any discussion or questions? Any, any discussion or questions? Okay, requires a roll call, so Phyllis?
Ms. Chancy?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hartbride?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Dr. Traut?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye. Okay, the motion is approved. We'll move to item B. Sarah?
Yes, item B is, so the next four are all from Metro Nashville Public Schools. This application came from International Academy of Excellence. And like the one prior to it, our review committee and my recommendation includes, does not meet in all areas of review. Therefore, our recommendation to the board is, again, to affirm the denial at the local district in this case as well.
Okay, any, any questions on item B? Questions, discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommendations of staff?
So moved.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any, any questions? Okay, and Phyllis, if you could call the roll, please?
Ms. Chancy?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hartbride?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Dr. Traut?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye. It's approved. Let's move to item C. Sarah?
Okay, the next two are both from the same sponsor, Kip Nashville. The first application was for Kip Nashville Middle. Again, the board had extensive discussion on this application in particular yesterday, given that it was recommended by the district and denied by the board at the local level. In this case, our review committee and my recommendation includes a rating of meets or exceeds in all areas, including performance record and portfolio review. Therefore, our recommendation is to approve this school and its Kip Middle, item C.
Okay, questions?
Question, just a comment to, said yesterday, to make sure that we understand that when we approve this, that we will be taking on the responsibility of this unless the district decides to take this back over. As far as that, would you explain that?
I'd be happy to. So yes, this would put the board, because Metro Nashville has a school on the priority list, in the authorizing position. However, by statute, there is a thirty-day period in which it has to be a mutual reconciliation, but the sponsor and the district can choose for that school to go back to the district, but it must be a mutual decision. It's a thirty-day window, and our legal counsel will be working with Metro Nashville to ensure that we look at that window and, and take whatever action appropriate.
Okay, Wendy?
Mr. Chair, um, so this isn't a question, but I feel like I just need to put something on the record. I was asked or demanded to recuse myself from this vote with an allegation of a conflict. And so I just want to put on the record sort of the process that we followed when that happened. I learned about it from a reporter, not from the person who made the allegation. However, I immediately contacted the board's attorney and asked her to review whether there would be any conflict. She made a legal finding that I had no conflict, which we then sent to that reporter. But I wanted to put that on the record. I wanted to put on the record, the allegation was because of the nonprofit that I work for and the fact that that nonprofit supports the work of high-performing charter schools in Nashville, that that is a conflict. And the legal finding was that it's not. So I wanted to put on the record that the nonprofit I work for is focused on high-quality education for all kids in Nashville, that we are not concerned with, you know, what the governance structure is. We will support high-performing charters. We will support high-performing district schools. And I'm confident there's no conflict here, and so I will, following legal advice, vote on this. And, and I want to just say one other thing because, because I have a microphone. I, which I often do. I attended all three local board meetings regarding this vote. I attended the appeal meeting regarding this vote. And, and I just want to say, I've, I've been in Kip Nashville schools. I've been in all of them. I've met families. I know the staff. I've met the teachers. And I just want to say on behalf of those families that the the vitriol that has been displayed by some about Kip Nashville, referring to it as a prison, attacking the practices in that school, that I, as a state board member, will, if you are a state board school, and I hope you work it out with the district if this is passed, but, but we appreciate that those families made a choice and are proud of their choice. And I, I personally support families making decisions for schools. I find it unfortunate that elected officials would refer to schools as prisons when these are schools where a lot of the families in those schools are trying to break a cycle, and they know what prison is. And so it was particularly offensive to me. And I just wanted to tell those families that there are plenty of people in the middle Tennessee area who respect your decisions, respect your choices, and will continue to support your choices for your own children.
Okay, other, other comments? Questions? Phyllis, I lost track. Do we have a motion on that one? Okay, is there a motion that we approve, recommendations of staff? Okay, we got a motion, a second? Any further discussion or questions? Okay, requires a roll call. Phyllis?
Ms. Chancy?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hartbride?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Dr. Traut?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye. It's approved. Let's move to item D.
Item D, again, is also from Kip Nashville. This application was for the Kip Nashville Primary School. Just like the prior application, however, our review committee found, and my recommendation also supports the fact that this application, again, meets or exceeds standard in all areas, including academics, operations, financials, as well as clear evidence of success in their existing schools and their portfolio record. Therefore, our recommendation, again, is to approve this school.
Okay, questions for Sarah? Any questions or discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommendations of staff?
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a second? Any, any questions? Okay, Phyllis, if you could call the roll, please?
Ms. Chancy?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hartbride?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Dr. Traut?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Austin?
Aye. Motion is approved. Okay, Sarah, item E?
Yes, this is the last appeal from Metro Nashville before you today. In this case, Rocketship Nashville Three also appealed the denial decision of the local board. In this case, our review committee and my recommendation found that the application meets or exceeds criteria in both the academic, the financial, and the operation plan. However, partially meets in the portfolio review and the performance record. We discussed this quite a bit yesterday as well, and I'm happy to discuss or take any questions about that last partially meets. But because of that, we, in this case, recommend and affirm the denial of the local district. But again, I'll stop there, and if there are any questions or clarifications from our discussion yesterday, happy to take those.
Okay, questions, discussion?
Chairman?
Okay.
I'm sorry. You thought you were gonna get...
I bet you go ahead and get a motion. Is there, is there a motion to approve the recommendations of staff? Got a motion, a second? Okay, Wendy?
So yesterday, part, much of that discussion was, was with me. And as I said yesterday, I have struggled since we received the recommendation on where my vote will be on this. I wholeheartedly respect the process, the people who are involved in the process, the committee. I understand where the recommendation is coming from. My, my, my struggle is with the fact that Rocketship's current school, the school that they've had for years, so the school we have data from, while their achievement levels are not, obviously not where we need them to be, where they want them to be, their growth was some of the highest in the city. And they agreed to take very low-performing students. They opened their doors, and so they were very candid about whoever would come, we would take. And so the narrative that charters cream kids is clearly not happening at Rocketship. They opened four grades at once, so the narrative that charters have it easier because they take one grade at a time clearly wasn't happening. I asked the staff to look at the growth of the schools, that these kids would be potentially, that these students at Rocketship Northeast would have gone to. And it looked from that data that most, if not all, I think there was one exception, of those schools have lower growth. And so my struggle is, when I'm thinking as a parent, and I know parents in those schools, if my child is coming in way below grade level and a school can move them farther than another school, I want that choice for my child. And so while I do believe wholeheartedly that next year's growth scores for Rocketship will continue to show them on this very high trajectory, I feel like my vote on this will have to be to recommend, to recommend, I would have recommended approval. And so that's, I just wanted to explain to the staff that it is not anything against the staff or the process. I just, and I know it's riskier, but I just feel like if I was a parent there, I would want this option, and I wouldn't want to have to wait a year. And so I just wanted to explain where I am.
Appreciate your comments, Wendy, and the discussion yesterday as well.
Okay, other, other comments or discussion? Okay, we do have a, a motion to approve the recommendation of the staff, which is to confirm the decision of the metro school system. Phyllis, if you could call the roll, please?
Ms. Chancy?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hartbride?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Dr. Traut?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
No.
Mr. Austin?
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just to add to this, I guess comments have already been made. I think that it's been an excellent process by our staff to work through these decisions, bring these recommendations, and we just commend the, the staff who's been involved for, for excellent work in this area. Okay, we'll now move to item five, which is the Tennessee Student Assistance Corporation Default Actions. Philip?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Item five is Tennessee Student Assistance Corporation keeps track of professionals in default on student loans. And you have a list of all the teachers, licensed teachers, who are currently in default. And by rule and statute, we are to suspend their licenses, and that is the board's staff recommendation.
Okay, any questions?
Not being an attorney, sir, all right. When, if it's in the statute that it's, their licensure is required upon a default, why does it require us to take the action?
Because that, that is how our, our rules are currently written, is that good cause on suspension, part of that is default.
Do we have any discretion?
No, unfortunately.
So, again, going back, if, if it's a forgone, if it's perfunctory, what we're doing, why are we actually having to do it? If it's in a rule, can that rule be changed?
Angie, do you want to fill that one?
So to answer that question, Mr. Edwards, statute requires that any licensure actions be voted on and approved by the board. So because in order to suspend the licenses, although we are required to suspend them, it requires a vote of the board. So unfortunately, although there's no discretion, the board does have to vote on it.
Excellent question, Mike. Area, it's still, it may make all the legal sense. And, and here's what prompts my question. Every time we do this, I'll look at this list, and I would love to know the story behind each person. And the one, the one story that pops up to me that probably would be best, best left. But yesterday, we talked a lot about teacher prep programs. And we talk about all the time those that are not getting retained. And I just wonder how many of these can't pay their loan back and how big these loans are, meaning how expensive their prep program was. And then now they're not, they're unemployed because they didn't get prepared, and now they're having trouble. I, that's not, that was a rhetorical question. But which gets me back to then, not knowing this stuff. It's, I don't like voting on something that's already been decided by law happens.
One thing that I can do is I can ask Tennessee Student Assistance Corporation to come and make a presentation to you, where they may be able to answer some of those questions and, and give a more full picture around it.
I, I think that it would be great for us, not on how, but sort of what we're seeing in these folks, for whatever reason. I'd love to know the various reasons for, for default. But I don't want to go through one line by line. And I, I personally would love for you all to investigate a way to revise the revocation rule that doesn't require a vote on this, if we have no discretion in it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Question, because this has been of grave concern of mine since the beginning, and every month it seems like the numbers are growing. And I've asked questions about the process because it's my understanding from discussions that we give these people every opportunity to repay the loan. They can pay a very small amount annually and be in good standing. And I, it's my, also my understanding that we oftentimes have challenges trying to locate these people, and it takes a three-year process that we go through. And I may not have all of the facts one hundred percent accurately. However, often their mail is returned undeliverable. And so they've moved on, and we don't know where they are. And so it's very challenging for us, for our staff, to be able to work these, and it's an arduous process. But when I learned that we give them every opportunity, including they can make the smallest of payments to stay in good standing, that gave me more peace of mind. Because I worried about every, every month we're voting, and it's how many teachers we have across the state, and every month we're losing, it appears that we're losing more teachers because they can no longer practice or, or teach. But I, I think that with what I know, I'm more comfortable now with this subject matter, that every opportunity is given to them to pay back their loan, regardless of the amount of the loan and regardless of the amount of the payment. So I just wanted to share that, because I'm not sure that everyone on the board knows that or understands that. And if we need to have a, another presentation on this subject matter to help us all feel more comfortable, rather than taking it from what I've learned from staff on my own, I think we should certainly do that.
Chairman, as part of getting a little clearer picture, if TSEC can give us some projections out, we know a lot about this already. We know what the, how the loan volume, the debt burdens are growing across higher education. But I'm sure they've done some forward thinking about what's the magnitude of this challenge moving forward, and how, how can processes be improved in any way possible to, to deal with it?
Mr. Chairman? Okay, yes, go.
I agree with Mike. My concern is the perfunctory nature that there is no discretion in dealing with this. This would happen anyway. And that's what my concern is more than anything else, that we have a rule that we must vote on. Even if we didn't, it would still happen. You don't see this in any other business that I, that I've been a part of.
Okay?
I just want to point out, I believe that would require a change to the statute, but we will check and, and make sure if it, if it can be accomplished through, we'll change. We'll definitely look into that.
Okay, let's, we'll ask the staff to come back to the January meeting with a review of this and what needs to be done to perfect the process. Lonnie?
Yes, sir. I understand why we're voting on this. I, I don't think we've, we're given a choice. Because I think the statute requires that we approve and set the guidelines and the rules based on the legislation that's been passed. And this legislation has been passed. We vote on things all the time. That where, we just made a change just a few minutes ago that we voted on, where that we removed the thirty days because it was changed to twenty. You're not given a, a choice on that, Mike. You've got to vote on that too, because the, the law changed. All we're doing is fulfilling the law based on what we have today, would be my opinion.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I'd be okay if somewhere amongst folks in... Well, I guess what I'm saying is I'd be okay if somewhere amongst, uh, folks, and if we went and asked the legislature, based on the logic that Kato, would they mind amending the statute?
That's the way to go about doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was my point.
Well, we'll, uh, ask, uh...
Well, I agree with that, I don't, I don't doubt that part.
We'll ask staff to, uh, come back to the, uh, January meeting with, uh, what we need to do to perfect this process. And obviously has got some concerns with it. Okay, other, other comments? Um, is there a motion to, uh, to approve? A motion to approve? Anybody?
So moved, so moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Okay, all, obviously we're called, why is a roll call, Phyllis?
Ms. Chancy.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Pass.
Ms. Hartgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Pass.
Ms. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Roberts.
Aye.
Dr. Trout.
Aye.
Ms. Tucker.
Pass.
Mr. Austin.
Aye. The ayes have it, uh, the motion is approved. Okay, we'll now move to, uh, teacher license actions and, uh, Philip, you have that? A reminder that we have removed, uh, item B from the list of, uh, proposed teacher license actions. Any questions? Or felt, if, any comments?
No, sir, no comments, but I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't have a question, I just want to say for the record, this is the first time since I've been on the board that I have not pulled one of these, so I want to be recognized for that.
We appreciate that.
I think Philip should be recognized for that. Yeah, or you should be recognized, good point.
Okay. Wendy, you're recognized. Okay, any, any, any questions? Okay, we will address these as one item, is our motion to, to approve the recommendations?
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Okay, Phyllis, if you could call the roll, please?
Ms. Chancy.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Hartgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Roberts.
Aye.
Dr. Trout.
Aye.
Ms. Tucker.
Aye.
Mr. Austin.
Aye. The ayes have it, the recommendations are approved. Wendy? Do you have a resolution?
I do, I have a, an oral resolution that I'm happy to submit in writing after. Um, whereas the State Board of Education recognizes Dr. William Trout and Rhodes College for hosting us with such grace. And whereas the State Board of Education recognizes Kato Johnson for sharing his beautiful city of Memphis with us. And whereas Dr. Trout and Kato Johnson, uh, are appreciated for the incredible hospitality, the amazing food and the opportunities to engage with the great citizens of Memphis, Tennessee, be it resolved that Dr. William Trout, Doc, and Mr. Kato Johnson be recognized for their exemplary hospitality. Um, and I would just say on, uh, then, a final note that's not on the resolution, that the next host or hostess should take notes.
Okay, Wendy makes that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, I've got five, six, seven, eight seconds here. Thank you, Wendy, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? It really, it really has been a great experience and the, uh, hospitality has been fantastic and gentlemen, we, we appreciate it, we really do. Yep. Okay, uh, that brings us to the end of our agenda, the meeting is adjourned. I will remind everybody that we've got meetings scheduled for 2016, uh, January the 29th, April the 15th, July the 22nd, and October the 21st. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you for your attendance, participation.
Thank you, Chairman.